Okay, Mrs. Bernacki.
Okay. All right, could I have a motion to adjourn the executive session and return to the public session? Tom, and a second from Kelly, all in favor? Everyone, motion carried. Stand Pudge. Everyone present is aware of where the exits are, and we are not talking. I'm gonna keep going?
Who's that?
I don't know.
We'll take care of that. With me. Done.
Yeah.
Guess we're playing the game.
That was unintentional, for sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay. Under our approvals, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve minutes transcription from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education dated September 14th, 2020. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion Xavier.
Xavier, and a second from Michelle. All in favor? Motion carried. We have FYI's budget appropriation reports for the general school lunch and special aid funds as of September 30th, 2020. And budget transfers and revenue status report. Any questions regarding those? Okay. Then we move to the treasurer's report. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the August 2020 treasurer's report. Now I have a motion. From Linda, and a second from Michelle. That was Linda and Michelle, I think I moved away from the mic. All in favor? Everyone? It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on September 16th, 2020, and September 30th, 2020. They have a motion. Bill, and a second from Kelly. All in favor? And that's everyone. And that moves us to board member communications and announcements. Who has something?
Sure, I'll say something briefly, just want to thank. I just want to thank the community, families, children, teachers, administration, for really following the rules and allowing us to go into Phase Two. Obviously, we all want to be, we all want our kids to be in school all the time, and it's going to be a gradual progress, but it was great to see us going into Phase Two. And I want to thank everybody that was involved in following all those rules.
Phase one and a half.
Our secondary students came back a little bit more so today, this week. And I agree, thank you Xavier.
Great, anybody else? Okay. Mr. Blansky.
I have a few items, first of all, for those who follow open meetings law and the executive orders that pertain to it. The governor just this morning extended the amendment to open meetings law that allow us to continue our board meetings remotely as we have been doing. This extension moves through, moves us through November 3rd, so this will cover the next meeting on October 26th as well. Just a couple of updates, just a lot of information swirling from the state level, New York State Department of Health, conversations that we've held administratively here and across our staff at each building. There is an active COVID dashboard and reporting mechanism. There are some concerns with that that have been reported, that it's working by zip code and not necessarily by district, and that it is very difficult to follow anything that doesn't, that doesn't go on directly in our schools. We either report to the Department of Health, or the Department of Health reports to us, and our channel of communication with our community, with respect to how we share information with our community will not be compromised. So we will make sure that regardless of what happens, that our community will find out about it very, very quickly. And I think the fact that our kids have done the right thing, and our staff has done the right thing, and everybody's been working together to keep, to keep numbers in this area locally, regionally low, it has made a considerable difference. I know there's also an application out there now that allows those who have it to detect others around them that may have tested for it, whether it be positive or negative. Update on state aid, we are still in a state of political turmoil in terms of whether or not federal relief will be coming in our direction. That'll help with our state aid situation, and there is an updated HEROES Act. I believe that's on the House floor at this point, at the federal level. What's going to happen at this point still remains to be seen, so there are a number of questions that are still out there in terms of our revenue in the form of state aid. And there are districts that are much more devastatingly impacted than we are with respect to the state aid shortages. There was a memo last week on state assessments from interim Commissioner Rosa, basically indicating that unless these state assessments can be administered, and this applies to Regents exams as well, unless they can be administered in person, that the State Education Department will be filing for a federal testing waiver. I don't know if they're even offering that at the federal level, but the state's position has been, we're going to plan as if everything is moving forward, but if we can't, if we cannot offer these or administer these tests in person, whether they be computer-based or paper and pencil, the waiver will be on the table. Also mentioned recently, and up for debate last week was the census deadline. I believe now it is firmly October 31st, so we'll send out a couple of more reminders there. We did, I shared with the board recently, the assessed valuation as of September, and fortunately, it did not drop drastically from the May estimate, which is actually a good sign. It's still not a great fiscal situation for any district, but it means that our tax rate will not rise to a level that is unmanageable because of a major drop in assessed valuation. And obviously, there's still ample time left to determine what that CPI will look like, what the tax levy limit, the allowable growth factor will look like for the calendar year, but obviously, we're watching that very closely. And just a list of congratulations here, I'd like to formally congratulate three groups of students. First of all, our National Merit Committed students. Congratulating Mia Brown, Chloe Buffon, Grace Kelly, Ella Seipel, Grace Wildermuth, then Brian Wong, and they join Andreas Seferian, who is a National Merit semifinalist. And we have a number of NISBA All-State Honorees. Sarah Bernacki, mixed chorus, congratulations Christine and Sarah. Chloe Buffon, triple chorus, Nicholas Dan Seglio, symphonic band, Katherine Eichenberger, triple chorus, Eliana Eng, Symphony Orchestra, the flute, she's also an alternate for the piccolo. Ella Seipel, Symphony Orchestra, and Grace Wildermuth, Symphony Orchestra. And lastly, the town is still, although it will be done virtually, they are running their Hispanic Heritage Month program, and we have four tremendous students who are going to be honored by the town and by the district, David Canas Granados, Adora Colay, Eric Flores Reyes, and Yanira Rivera. So congratulations to this group of fine young people.
Interesting the overlap between the National Merit Scholars and the All-State.
I noted, I noticed that when I was jouting down the names.
Just says something about music in schools, that's all.
Okay. Don't disagree at all. Christine, for president, hello?
Hello, I didn't know you were down.
Thank you.
Okay, it's time for our first public commentary. If I could ask you, if you'd like to speak at the public commentary, to raise your electronic hand, the first thing you should do when called on is to identify yourself, because in order to speak at public commentary, you must be a member of our district community, meaning a district president, a parent, a student, or an employee. Normally, our first public commentary is first allotted to those that wish to speak on the items for discussion or action, but today, our only item for discussion and action is our NISBA resolution slash annual meeting. I have a feeling no one in the public probably wants to discuss that, but feel free. So if anyone does, go ahead and raise your hand.
Make their public commentary first.
Yes, they would make their public.
And then.
Oh, okay, yes, we are going to have you make your public, make your comments, and then we will mute you, and if there's any discussion to follow the commentary, it will happen while you're muted. And I think that's it, so.
Let me just raise my volume here. Actually, it's raised already, should be fine. Again, you want, don't raise your hand in front of your camera, you need to go to the hand icon in the participant panel. You ready?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Graber, you're up first.
Thank you, just to actually, a comment on the open meetings modification. I understand that the modification of the open meeting law allows the Board of Education to meet remotely, as it has been doing, but I was wondering whether a hybrid plan was possible for Board of Education as well, given that the teachers and students are back at 50%. There's definitely enough capacity at the auditorium for this. Historically, these are not meetings that are overly attended in person, so it seems like there would be enough space to do so moving forward. But I will say that the ability to follow and interact in these meetings remotely has had an incredible impact on the level of participation, and I would ask that the Board of Education continue this model after the open meetings law returns to the status quo. Thanks.
Okay, and he, Graber makes a point that we have discussed in terms of allowing a fixed number of people into, into the auditorium during the meeting. We can, I believe the number is still 50 at this point. The concern I had, and I've shared this with the board, is there are already in here without letting anyone in, there are 15 or more of us, just with cabinet and tech staff, and Mr. Landers, and our district clerk alone. The one concern would be if we exceeded that 50 with everybody involved, and it would have to turn people away from entering the facility, and that's one thing we were trying to avoid. And I also agree that, I do believe that if there is any silver lining here, some of our practice is going to change for the, for the better permanently, and that would be the live streaming and the, if we can do it based on open meetings law, the participation on a remote basis, so I agree with that as well.
Great points.
Okay, I'm going to unmute, and Mrs. Brand, do you have that? Yes, okay. Jenny, I'm going to unmute you, I'm going to ask that you start with identifying yourself, first and last name, in connection to the district.
My name is Jennifer Liver, I'm a parent of three in the district. I want to start off thanking you guys for everything you've been doing. I know it hasn't been easy, and you've been getting a lot of negative feedback. My question relates to, I have three students in three different learning models. I have two on IEPs, so they're in school full-time, and they watch all the other cohorts come and go, and I have one who is not. I looked about a week ago, and we had 298 students that were in-school learning and 1,200 remote learning. And then I just looked before we came on, and those numbers have decreased to 274, 1,214 remote learning. So more people are opting to be at home remote learning. I know that that does not reflect today being our first day going into the second phase, but my question is, will we be considering voluntary, full-time, in-person learning to start beefing our numbers up to be a little bit more in alignment with our surrounding districts? We're running at about 20% right now, and the other districts are around 60 to 70. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I think she was referring to the report cards on that those.
Yeah, the New York State, yeah.
I was going to ask that question, that makes sense. So we're actually reporting based on, does that change today? I have to go back and look at that, because we're trying to report based on how many students are in school or in a cohort on a given day. A couple of things, what we're trying to do here, and I think you recognize this across the board, and the board does as well, that we've been trying to move forward very cautiously. Right now, we have under 100 students, just under 800 students that are fully remote. That has decreased because the number came back K through 12. I believe 100 students or around that, Ms. McCoy, if I'm not mistaken, came back at the end of the first quarter, and that's K through 12, so it's not going to have a major impact in any one building or grade level. I believe they were somewhat equitably distributed there, so they kind of spread out across the grade levels. So we're down below 800, and we are looking at both elementary and secondary at this point. On any given day, we'll have under 50%, but not far under 50%, primarily because of the, of all virtual students. Our concern remains, bringing back more than that at this point would compromise the social distancing that we've been able to maintain, even with the shift at the secondary level. So we're still, and I know school districts are going below that, and there are all kinds of different reasons for their doing so, but concerns include, we are moving into a cooler weather season, and we are moving into a time when people spend more time indoors. There have been increases in areas not too far from us in the downstate region and across the state. We just want to make sure that we're not going to take a step forward to have to take a step, or even more than a step back. We do want the kids in school and participating in person as quickly and as wholeheartedly as possible. I just, I think we just need to do this in a calculated manner as we have today. I don't know if the board would like to add anything.
I have two questions, actually, this is Christine. So, my first question is, when you say come, that they came back, you mean because that's the date that they chose to be remote, and so?
They chose the first month, so we offered a couple of options, first month, first quarter, first semester, or beyond. And we did actually reach out to each one of these families individually and ask them whether they wanted to remain or come back, and a number of them decided that, based on what they had chosen, they wanted to return to the hybrid model after, on October 1st, so it was Thursday that they returned.
Okay, and then, do you know what, what's the explanation? Or maybe I'm just, or maybe Mrs. Liver, or I, or whoever's looking at those sheets, those reports every day? What's the, it doesn't seem to say 50%, I don't think. That's more close to 50% on there. I don't know the, what those reports actually mean, is I guess what I'm asking you.
Talking about the enrollment numbers?
Yeah.
It's just based on the numbers that we have on record as being part of that hybrid cohort in school on that given day, and it will not include those that are all virtual, even though we have them attached potentially to a hybrid cohort. If they're not in, if they're in an all-virtual position right now, they're not part of that count. And Mrs. Miranda, correct me if I'm wrong, today would have been the first time that it's all of the cohort one and cohort two students at the secondary level combined.
No, three and four.
I'm sorry, three and four.
So today's report would look somewhere closer to 50%.
Markedly different from the report on Friday at the secondary level.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, there was some discussion when we first started this, that we would try to keep families together, and I think that what may have happened is that some of the cohorts may have split from the middle school to the primary schools.
So today was the, was the one issue with that, and that's why we are, cohorts three and four at the high school that were in school today. That will happen again on the 19th, which is actually the next Monday, so we can realign that, and that what was, that's what was misconstrued by some outside the district. Realignment just means we're going to keep our families together, so.
It was just a one-day anomaly.
It was today, today was that anomaly, so there may, there were some kids who were probably on remotely today, then will be back in school next Monday when the cohorts are aligned. So cohorts, the two, three and four, cohort three and four at the high school and middle school will be experiencing two consecutive school day Mondays in school.
Well, next Monday's off, the Monday after.
School day Mondays, so the 5th and the 19th. And just to make sure everybody's on target with that, News 12 did report on this today, and they did it accurately. News 10 did not do such a great job on Friday, but the 12th is a Monday where nobody is in school, and there will be no instruction. That's why it's the 5th and the 19th, not the 5th and the 12th.
Can I just ask one question, just so that parents understand? If we were to bring more kids in and go under six feet, if a student tests positive, then, am I correct in understanding, the whole class has to quarantine?
Well, that's a conversation we would have with the Department of Health, and it's not so much the fact that we would be under six feet as much as everybody would be in the same enclosed space. So I will tell you, based on the positive case that we had here, a week ago Friday, was it? It was an ongoing conversation with the Health Department, and they asked for a lot of information to determine exactly how many minutes students were in contact with each other, how many minutes that staff, staff members were in contact with that student. And I would like to actually commend Mrs. Capitulo Sade and the staff at Jefferson for being on top of exactly what was required by the Department of Health, and we had the answers in hand by that evening, and were able to communicate with our families, both who needed to quarantine and who did not need to quarantine. So thank you to the folks at Jefferson, and Mrs. Capitulo Sade for that.
Okay, I think that concludes, right, we don't have any other raised hands?
I don't see any others.
That concludes our first public commentary, you'll have another chance at the end of the meeting if you think of something you'd like to ask or say. And that moves us to our one and only item for discussion and action.
Really more discussion than action?
Right.
Before we get started here, I just want to thank Kelly Donovan for braving the new situation last Wednesday, representing the district and raising her hand to consent to the Nassau Suffolk School Boards agreement that the positions they took would be the positions generally the region would take. I'm going to let her describe her experience, because she, I think she enjoyed it immensely.
I did, it was quick and painless, not so quick, but pretty, pretty painless. The free meal would have been nice, but otherwise, it wasn't so bad. So we went over the 19 recommended proposals and the eight not recommended proposals, and those are proposals that were given by other school boards and also the NISBA Board of Directors. So I don't know who, if anyone has looked at the packet, but they're all listed in there, and the tally sheet here summarizes all of them that's on the screen now. So, and R means that it was recommended, and so we had time to look over each of them beforehand. A lot of them were general in nature, some were specific. They ranged anywhere from an overhaul of testing to not be so, not teach to the test and allow teachers and administrators to see results quicker so that they could, they could address anything that they might need to. There was one about alternative election arrangements, if there was a natural disaster, something like that. There was.
That one generated quite a bit of discussion.
That one did, and I was surprised, because that was the one that I thought was not really a big deal, but apparently, people had a lot of opinions about that. The other one that generated a lot of questions was the parent advocate issue. That was number, where is that? Number 15, NISBA to seek support, to seek to support legislation to provide training and certification for professional parent advocates to attend CSE hearings. So the questions mostly range from what exactly determines you to be a parent advocate, and the designation was, you had, that had to be your actual job that you were trained for, not, you know, an aunt, or grandma, or mom, or dad. Those, those people are allowed to attend the hearings, but not necessarily, they don't need to have specific training for that. So there was a lot of talk about that. The other one that had questions, and one thing that they specified was that we don't need to wordsmith these resolutions, it's more the intent that is actually important, not, not the actual words in them. People did have some comments about how to better phrase it, and we'll have an opportunity to review them again before the October 31st meeting, and then we can recommend specific wording there. But personally, I didn't really see the need to do that, and Jim, I don't think you did either. But if you guys want to look it over and let me know if you have specific questions about any of the issues, if you've had a chance to look it over and have specific questions, I can talk more about anyone specifically right now. But otherwise, the consensus was pretty much that everyone was in agreement with all of the ones that NISBA recommended. The ones that they didn't recommend, a lot of them came from the same school board, the only aunt-to-school board, or aunt-to-our school board. And the main objection from NISBA was that it did not fall in line with their jurisdiction, it was more of a national issue. And then, the other ones was, let's see. So number 27 is similar to number 19, and the difference in that one, they recommended that mandated reporters and teachers and administration undergo training to recognize the signs of child abuse. The main difference in the one that they objected to is that they wouldn't require it to be given. So that would just be another unfunded mandate, they felt. So they, they will support the recommendation of that training, but not necessarily, not at all the requirement of that. But overall, it was a pretty quick process, everyone just voted on each. If anyone had questions, they asked them. There were some interesting characters, just a few, but it was very interesting and educational. So now we just go to the meeting on October 31st, and we'll finalize this and approve it, and that should be it. Jim, is there anything you want to add?
No, I think you covered it very nicely. I should get a taste of what that meeting is all about. It was streamlined, because they did not vote on the, basically, you have representatives from a number of school districts from across Nassau and Suffolk County, they're workshopping and discussing these resolutions and trying to come to consensus. And at the end of the meeting, they lumped all 27 together and asked for a consent vote, and I believe it was, it seemed close to, if not unanimous.
It was, yeah.
Support those positions. So if you're looking at the worksheet that I have projected up on the screen here, the three columns, the Finance and Legislation Committee, that's Nassau Suffolk School Boards, the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Executive Committee is the second column, and the outcomes of the resolutions meeting would be for us to fill in as it has been along, but since they did it in consent fashion, all three columns are going to match. And now Kelly will represent Huntington at the New York, New York State School Boards Association annual meeting, and will vote on your behalf. So she said, if you have any concerns or questions about these, they did seem fairly straightforward, but she's the one to speak to.
Okay.
Some of them seem logical, it seems like they've addressed a lot of the issues that we've had through special education, some of the wasteful litigation that we see. I think that was very important. The one thing that kind of bothered me a little bit was number nine, which is that they wanted us to decide the extent of the mayor's control over school districts beyond New York City. I would think, in my opinion, that that's kind of outside of our realm, similar to the issues that they had on a national level. So surprised that they allowed that to remain there, but I guess.
The resolution is to oppose it, to oppose proposals.
Right, oh, okay, okay.
So you're actually supporting the opposition?
Yep.
Which is a, double negative?
No.
Oxymoron, I don't know. The resolution there is to support the opposition.
Because a positive times a negative is a negative, so you're good.
I'm just going to get you. What Xavier suggested is exactly what they're supporting.
Yes.
I'm surprised 10 is there, has to be there.
Why it has to be there?
Yeah. Number 10? Yeah.
You would think it was already done, right?
Right, done.
I saw some strange article today that someone was proposing a tobacco age of 25.
This goes toward not just any products, you know, and notice, if you go down and look at some of the things that they do not support, while you may look and say, well, why wouldn't they support that? Sometimes they don't support, not because of the content of the issue, but because it's beyond the scope of what a school board or a school boards association should be, should be focused upon. And Kelly pointed that out.
Health insurance and.
Thank you, Kelly, for taking this on for us.
No problem.
Very good job, thank you. Okay. Then we can, you're good? Okay. We move on to curriculum and instruction.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSE, CPSE submissions as delineated.
Okay, can I have a motion? Kelly, and a second from Tom, all in favor? That's everybody. And then personnel.
Okay, bear with me for a moment, I'm asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules 3, 5, 8, 11, 13, 15, 16, and 22.
I have a motion.
Somebody from this side.
Michelle, and a second from Xavier. All in favor? Anything you need to do there?
Yeah, very quickly, just like to welcome two teachers who are going to be serving in leave capacity for us. Sarit Hike is going to be joining us in the Reading Department, specifically Jack Abrams Stem, and Christiana Salerno, who is going to be joining us as a special education teacher at Huntington High School. So thank you to both of them, and welcome.
Okay, then, Dr. Ackerman.
I should also mention, I believe I've announced this individual before, but due to some shuffling and somebody who is not with us any further, Mr. Ian Western is going to be taking over probationary slot in special education at the middle school level. So welcome more formally to Ian. All set.
Okay. Okay, so Dr. Ackerman then.
Okay, it's upon recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approve items I through P on this evening's business agenda.
I have a motion.
Motion.
From Linda, and a second from Bill. Any questions? And all in favor? That's everybody.
Sure. I'll start out with a gift from a Mr. Peter Kopinger. He's presenting a donation of various school supplies to Southown Primary School. This donation has an approximate value of $200. Thank you, Mr. Kopinger. And then we have, I think, two others that kind of go hand in hand, and they're more of, I believe they are a gift, but it's also because of the competition was, was a one, one that they won, but I can't read it.
This was a grant that was obtained, secured by Washington Primary School, Dr. Richards. It's a two-part grant, so part of, and it's almost equal amounts, part of the money is coming from Cornell, the other part is coming from the Suffolk County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Excellent.
So thank you.
Congratulations, Washington.
Yes, great job to Washington on that.
Okay, that brings us to our second public commentary.
Let me bring my participant screen back up. Okay.
So once again, same rules apply. Raise your hand. If no one raises your hand, then I won't have to give the whole speech again. Please raise your hand if you want to.
Okay, she knows because she spoke before. All right, Mrs. Liverntum, I'm going to unmute you.
Is it just still raised, or?
No, she raised.
No, no. I tried to raise my hand in video because I wanted to clarify my question. I didn't want to waste anybody's time. The question I had earlier was, at what point will we be starting to take people who volunteer, voluntary, would like their children to be in school full-time, once you've run out of your, the cohorts of, because you say that you've reached out to people to see what they would like to do. I'm in a household with two children that are full-time and one who is not. So like Xavier had said, the whole keeping the families together, we're one of those people who fell into a different spot. I know that you don't take them case-by-case basis, and I appreciate that. But at what point will we start reaching out into the communities and say, if you would like your child, we have room now, we have people who want to stay on the remote learning, but we're willing to accept people on a voluntary basis outside of the alphabet system? That's was my question.
All right, I'm going to ask a clarifying question. You mean those who would like to come back full-time, five days? Okay. All right, we have not really considered that yet. I guess it is something that we can consider asking at some point. I cannot give you a timeframe. My concern would be that there are a lot of people in that, in that category who would appreciate coming back five days full-time, and, you know, certainly understandable. And if the numbers were that high, picking and choosing would be impossible. So until we are willing to move forward and compromise the social distancing, or until the situation improves to the point where we're comfortable on a public health basis, I don't know if that would be possible. But certainly, to give it some thought, if we're just a small number of people, that's kind of what's happening when people are coming out of the time periods that they've requested for, even though they're coming back to hybrid, the September 30th, the end of October, first quarter, the half-year, these people are going to be coming back into the hybrid model, and they will increase numbers there as well. We just need to do this responsibly and make sure that we are not taking in more than we can handle on a safe basis, based on the guidelines that have been provided to us from the New York State Department of Health and Suffolk County Department of Health.
And also, we have a plan that has phases. That's not one of them.
Right. And this really isn't a phase two. And listen, I understand where Mrs. Liverntum and others are coming from. I certainly understand the desire to want, we all want all the kids back full-time. It's just that there's so much uncertainty involved at this point, and we don't know what the next couple of weeks are going to bring. I think the next couple of weeks, honestly, are going to be critical. And just note that Xavier mentioned phase two before. This is really one component of our phase two. I'd love to move forward a little bit further. We're going to, if we look at this, we would look at it on a, on an incremental basis. But, you know, right now, the uncertainty is there. We want to see how our secondary increases work out for us. And, you know, like I said, I think it goes without saying, because it was said before, if for no other reason, I just want to commend again everybody for really working hard to make sure that this community is safe and, and for really adhering to all of the safety protocol that we have in place. We want to educate our kids to the best of our ability. And this is, you know, I think for every district, less than ideal because of all that's going on around us. And, you know, at a point where we can comfortably bring more back in, we're going to do that. But we, again, we need to do it safely and responsibly.
Okay, any other hands? I see them. So that moves us to our board member commentary. Anybody have any closing remarks besides Go Yankees?
That's a good one.
Okay, then a motion to adjourn. Tom, and a second from Xavier. All in favor? We are done. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you next time.
Thank you for joining us, folks.